Good afternoon. One moment. Good afternoon, welcome to everybody who is here in the historic courthouse with us. We are waiting on one commissioner who is almost here, so we're just gonna give a couple of minutes to make sure that we've got full commission who's walking in right on cue. Welcome Commissioner Anderson. We know we've made parking difficult, so I will just acknowledge that. And also there's, you know, jury trial and jury selection going on this week, so it's a compounding factor. Welcome Commissioner Anderson. Welcome everybody that's here with us today and online. I am running the meeting today because our chair Commissioner Kelly is virtual, and it's just way easier to chair the meeting in person. So I'm here to sort of introduce this topic and our guests, and then I will turn it over. A reminder for those of you who may not be familiar, work sessions are for informational purposes. We don't have a public comment section, or do we take any action? Or take any votes during a work session, however, following this work session, we will have our regular 5:30 business meeting where we always have general public comment and welcome. That, and we'll give more details then. And with that, I will go ahead and provide a little bit of introduction of this topic. We're here to talk about tenant right to counsel today, and we've got three guests with us. We have Andrew Ashbrook, who is joining us virtually from the National Coalition for Civil Right to Counsel. He'll be providing some presentation materials first. I'll acknowledge commissioners that the slides are a little bit out of order in terms of how they might be presented, but all the information is there. So Andrew will go first, then Vince Munoz from Lawrence Tenants is here to provide further presentation. And Hetty Pierce Armstrong is here to, from Kansas Holistic Defenders again, to sort of be a resource for information and continue their conversation about their experience with eviction defense in Douglas County thus far and currently. The other thing I wanted to do for commissioners and for the public who may not be as familiar with this topic is just provide a little bit of a timeline, an abbreviated timeline about my familiarity with this topic being discussed in Douglas County. So March to June 2023, there was a right to counsel sprint, which was, I believe, nine, eight to 10 weeks of really concentrated meetings that many stakeholders in the community participated in to learn more about what was right to counsel? What did it look like? How could it look here? Since then, there's been ongoing discussions in various places throughout the community, which have included work groups for both A Place for Everyone strategic plans and our Community Health Improvement Plan for Douglas County. On January 17th, 2024, we had a joint city-county meeting featuring the A Place for Everyone presentation and city-county discussion about that. Beyond that January meeting, there is ongoing discussion in those same spaces, the CHIP, A Place for Everyone work groups, and Lawrence Tenants is actively organizing for policy and programming in Douglas County. May 7th and May 8th are the two dates respectively that the City of Lawrence Commission and Douglas County Commission passed resolutions adopting the strategic plan, which include the A Place for Everyone strategic plan, which includes a stated goal to establish the tenant's right to legal representation in Douglas County on page 13 of that summary document. And it's further outlined, which is in our packet as planned strategy for in the affordable housing section of our fuller strategic plan. Summer 2024 Tenant Experience Survey and Report was released. That also notes right to counsel. August 2024, the Tenant Right to Counsel Policy Work Group was convened. That included representatives from Douglas County Administration's team, Kansas Holistic Defenders, Kansas Legal Services, Lawrence Douglas County Public Health, several advocates and organizers from Lawrence Tenants and other social service organizations. February 2025, a health impact assessment was generated and published by the Public Health Department as a result of that work group. March 2025, Tenant Right to Counsel was briefly discussed at a city commission meeting during a presentation of Lawrence Tenants, the experience survey results, and the recommendations from that report. On May 31st, Tenant Right to Counsel Town Hall was hosted by Lawrence Tenants, also with guests from the National Coalition for Civil Right to Counsel. Guest and summer organizing has continued this summer, including, I believe, commissioners with most different, or conversations with most if not all county commissioners. August 20th, we had our eviction work session and learned more about what tenant defense looks like. And that brings us to today, where we've got this more formal presentation produced and sort of headed up by Lawrence Tenants with some assistance from the National Coalition and Kansas Holistic Defenders. And I, for one, am really excited about this conversation finally happening as a full commission, as a five-member commission. And yeah, so with that, thanks for letting me take a few minutes to give that background, since we didn't quite get that, I didn't think of it soon enough to get it produced in written format, and just wanted to sort of put that on the record. So Andrew, if you are ready, we're gonna turn to you to present first, and you should be able to share your screen and move through the slides yourself. Let us know if you have any technical difficulties.
Perfect. Thank you so much, and hello everyone. Sorry, I'm just trying to multitask. Okay, you should be able to see my screen now on the presentation, hopefully. Hi everyone, my name is Andrew Ashbrook. I am the Tenant Right to Counsel Implementation Advisor at the National Coalition for Civil Right to Counsel. Basically what that means, I'm mostly working with jurisdictions that have passed Tenant Right to Counsel, but I'm also doing work with places that are just starting Tenant Right to Counsel as well. And then I know we are a little bit limited on time, so this presentation usually is a little bit longer. I'm gonna go a little bit fast. If you have questions, please interrupt me, or if you need me to slow down, please interrupt me. So to start with, National Coalition for Civil Right to Counsel, we were created in 2003, and we cover all basic human needs in civil cases. So housing is a big area that we work in, but we also work in family law, domestic violence, civil incarceration, and more. And we help support litigation, legislation, social science research, and education efforts to try to advance right to counsel in these civil cases where a basic human need is threatened. We've worked all across the country, we've worked with all types of different organizations, and we've helped many, many jurisdictions think about this, talk about this topic, and a lot of places pass. So first of all, I'm gonna pitch two really quick resources. The first is this interactive map that you can find on our website. This is really fun little tool that lets you look at jurisdictions across the country and see in different areas of civil cases what states have right to counsel for those different areas of law. And you can see, click on the states and see a little bit more about what's going on. So if you ever want to play around with that, that's really good. And the other one is this newer resource that we are just kind of setting out today, not today, but this year, which is this Eviction RTC Guide. This is basically distillation of all of the learning that we've done over the past years about what right to counsel for tenants facing eviction looks like. It goes through all the steps about how to set up, what questions you should be thinking about, how to form a coalition to pass it, kind of what good language looks like, as well as lots and lots of studies about how effective this is. So it has a lot of information, but it's really, really great. Kind of, like I said, a distillation of a lot of what we've learned over the years. All right, so I wanna take a step back and talk about what is a right to counsel for tenants facing eviction? So at a minimum, what we're looking at and what we consider at the coalition as a right to counsel program is that it's providing a free lawyer to tenants and eviction proceedings, or their equivalent, so if a landlord self-help evicts, or there's a voucher termination or something like that. And then we're also looking for government funding. Lots of places use private funding or grant funding as kind of like, you know, measures to get these programs started, but really it should be a sustainable government program long-term. And then we're also looking for full representation. This is where it separates between right to counsel and other programs such as self-help and kind of brief services that legal services might provide. And so why right to counsel for tenants facing eviction? First of all, you know, whenever we're talking about this, we cannot overstate the impact that having housing has for people in the community and how basic of a human need it is. And so therefore, evictions and threatening that housing is, we've seen a shatter point for a lot of people, and it has this cascading effect on people's lives in terms of employment, health, everything like that. It also helps to advance race equity. Black women especially are at the greatest risk of eviction. It is effective. We have decades of data showing how having an attorney in an eviction case improves your chances to stay in your home. And then we have lots of results now from RTC jurisdictions. The first one was passed in 2017, so about eight years now, and we're starting to get that data, and it is overwhelmingly positive. And then finally, it addresses this representational disparity. Only 4% of tenants nationwide are represented, while 83% of landlords are represented in eviction cases, which creates a very, a great imbalance of power when it comes to eviction cases. There is cost savings. We've done this study many, many times, and it's been predicted and then found that programs that invest in right to counsel save money on the back end. These are cases, these are costs that come with homeless shelters, with healthcare, with foster care, other social safety net services. Keeping people in their homes at the front helps prevent these costs in the back. Here's a little bit more about race equity. I'm not gonna go into this too much unless there's questions, but I do wanna point out this link at the bottom for the Case Made. We worked with the Case Made, which is a nonprofit, to build kind of a, we call it a playbook, but it's a way to talk about tenant right to counsel as a tool for racial equity and kind of steering into that conversation. So it's a great resource as you're considering tenant right to counsel. Some more things, why tenant right to counsel is important? The existence of unraised claims. So these studies have been done all over the country and finding that when people are coming to court, a lot of times, they don't know what claims they have against their landlord. They don't know what their legal defenses are until they speak with an attorney. And so getting them an attorney able to represent them is really important because of that. And then, yeah, here are just some of the findings. Like I said, I'm gonna kind of keep it short, so I'm not gonna go over each finding. But findings in Baltimore, New Jersey, Philly, Chicago. We have a lot more studies on our website and in kind of those resources that I mentioned as well. The other thing, we kind of labeled this as lack of court gatekeeping. So, oops. So, yeah, this is, you know, having attorneys in these cases really helps find the legal deficiencies, holding landlords to the standards that are required under the law. It's also really different when everybody gets an attorney compared to when judges appoint attorneys based on kind of their perception of the case. This really puts the power back in the tenant's hands to have an expert look at their case and help them throughout the entire case and find those meritorious defenses. So a quick history of tenant right to counsel. Before 2014, you know, there was some writings in the 80s. Gideon was passed to provide, or was a court case that provided right to counsel in criminal cases, but the same was not passed for civil cases. And so there was some work kind of setting the stage, but then 2014 and 2019 is when this really took off, took off across the country. When the campaigns in New York and San Francisco started, and then New York passed right to counsel in 2017, and San Francisco passed it in 2018. And so that's the first time that these programs really started. I realized that these popped up. Since then, between 2020 and 2025, we've had, this is even outdated. There's a lot more than five states, there's 26 jurisdictions now that have right to counsel. And, you know, we keep seeing these outcomes of finding that right to counsel helps tenants keep homes, avoid disruptive displacement, improves health and birth outcomes, avoids homelessness, all these good things for the community. And also, the cost savings that were predicted are being played out as well. Currently, so this is the slide I like, though, we need to fix the timeline here. But here you can see kind of the evolution of tenant right to counsel. It started with New York City in 2017, San Francisco quickly followed in 2018, and then a couple more cities passed it, Cleveland, Newark, and Philadelphia, pre-pandemic. Post-pandemic, a lot of places were using ARPA funding and ERAP funding to pass tenant right to counsel, and so we saw this explosion of tenant right to counsel as a response to the pandemic. We've seen several states now, several counties, as well as a lot more cities pass right to counsel, with the most recent being LA City and Columbus, Ohio in 2025. Meanwhile, there's a lot more places that are introducing tenant right to counsel across the country or have pilot programs going. And then a lot of other places that we are working with at some of these initial stages, helping them get set up for tenant right to counsel as well. This is just a sampling. We have over 150 jurisdictions that we work with, most of them in tenant right to counsel type of work. So here's some of these successes that I mentioned earlier. Definitely staying in home, obtaining additional time to move, avoiding evictions on the record, avoiding homelessness, and reducing money judgments are all results that we've seen from tenant right to counsel programs so far. Once again, lots of information here, so I hope you get the slides later to look through this. Efficiency, we've seen a lot more coordination among service providers and courts. This often also makes landlords happy to kind of have an efficient system, to have landlords be able to talk to tenant attorneys and kind of cut to the chase of issues really quickly. Court culture change, we've seen courts radically shift in how justice is being served and making this a more equal place for tenants. Court culture has now lets people get more adjournments to find an attorney, reduces bias against tenants, increases court awareness of need to enforce tenants' rights. And then there's a lot of ambiguous areas of law that have been on the book for a very long time, but because there's never been a strong tenant bar to kind of litigate these, these ambiguous questions and areas of the law are getting filled out in major ways in a lot of these jurisdictions. You know, RTC programs put tenants in a position to advocate and seek further systemic changes. This, a lot of times, is seen as kind of a beginning to advance other tenant rights as well. And it can be seen to, we've also seen how it kind of plays into other legislative acting actions such as just cause laws, increased affordable housing. These tenant right to counsel programs really help galvanize that. And finally, I think that's it, yeah. This is the most recent time this type of poll was done, and I'll have to figure out where it was done. But overwhelmingly, people were in favor of having a right to legal counsel during eviction proceedings. And then one thing that I just want to say is that tenant right to counsel is not a silver bullet. It's not something that on its own is gonna solve everything. These work really best when they're in conjunction with other services supporting tenants, things like rental assistance, things like mediation, and other systems like that. So yeah, that was a very quick kind of overview. I hope I didn't take too much time, but I'm happy to answer questions later in the presentation.
Thank you so much, Andrew. You did not take too much time. That was great. You can go ahead and stop sharing. And I forgot to mention before and confirm for you that commissioners have received and reviewed the slides ahead of time, and they've been published as part of our agenda packet since late last week. Commissioners, I also, unless anybody has super burning questions, thought that I would let the presentations occur, and then we can dive into questions and discussion if that feels all right. I'm seeing affirmative head nods, so. Thank you, Andrew, and thanks for staying on for questions later, and I'll turn it over to Vince.
Good. Thank you. And so, yeah, and thanks, Andrew, for giving that kind of national context. I'll be providing a little bit more local context, and I'll try to get through these slides pretty quickly so that way we have time for questions. And so if we can go ahead and start at the third slide, A Place for Everyone. So I'm Vince Munoz. I'm an organizer with Lawrence Tenants. You know, as Commissioner Reed said, a right to counsel is actually something that our city and county staffs here in Douglas County and in the City of Lawrence have already been thinking about for a long time, for several years now. We participated in work groups and so on, and so I just wanted to reiterate that this is a part of a Place for Everyone plan, and this, what we are proposing is kind of action, making that plan a reality. So, next slide. Even though a right to counsel is not mentioned in the Community Health Improvement Plan, it also still helps the county accomplish other goals such as in the CHIP plan, particularly as it relates to the anti-poverty goal of reducing poverty among single women-headed households, as noted by the Eviction Lab, which is a research center at Princeton University. Women in particular, low-income women, women of color are especially at risk of eviction. And so I think that this ordinance would help like advance additional goals of the county as well. Next slide. And so that's why we're proposing this right to counsel program, and we can talk about the timeline a little bit too throughout this conversation, but it would be great if we could have this voted on by October 1st to help our service providers get through the hiring process. And then, next slide. So for some additional local context, Douglas County is actually a renter-majority county. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, 50.5% of housing units in our county are renter-occupied. And again, going back to that CHIP objective, 60.8% of women-headed households with no spouse are renters in our county. Next slide. The county conducted a tenant experience survey, and it found that half of renters in our county are rent-burdened, which means that we're paying more than a third, or a third or more of our monthly rent or monthly income towards rent. And close to 37% of households in our county experiencing housing problems as defined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This means things like not complete kitchens, not complete plumbing facilities, overcrowding, and so on. A slide, thank you. 45% of renters in that survey here in Douglas County felt unsafe in their homes, and 63% had unresolved maintenance requests. As I noted in the slide, hundreds of respondents said that they didn't submit maintenance requests for fears of retaliation against their, by the property manager. 90% reported things like verbal harassment or threats, or 90, not 90%, 90 people in the survey reported verbal harassment and threats. 12 people actually reported being physically assaulted by their landlord, and tenants don't know what to do about this. They don't know their rights. And so that's why I included that quote to the effect of saying, you know, someone told the survey, you know, "I almost wanted to get a restraining order, but I'm thinking, how do you get a restraining order against your landlord?" And tenant right to counsel solves some of these aforementioned problems by allowing tenants to raise counterclaims in court when an eviction is filed against them. And so, you know, if the landlord is found liable, that means they may have to pay damages to the tenant, and that sort of creates a financial incentive for landlords to comply with existing law and be good fiduciaries of that relationship. As Andrew mentioned, there's also cost savings associated with this because, you know, our county and local, and county and city governments spend a lot on homelessness services. In 2023, here in the county, 11.3% of ambulance instances were for homeless individuals, and 14.5% of jail bed days were for homeless individuals. And so if we prevent people from becoming homeless in the first instance by keeping them housed through raising counterclaims and things like that, we can save money in the long term for the county and be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. I know there was some interest in talking about tenant right to counsel versus mediation. So, you know, as Commissioner Reed mentioned, we participated in a work group with county and city staff, and we actually had the chance to hear from the Johnson County mediators because they have a mediation program. I personally asked two of the mediators for Johnson County, "Do you have any landlord-tenant legal training?", and they both told me no. I also asked them, "In instances where you do know the law and you hear a landlord say something to the effect of, say something, admit basically to something illegal, are you allowed to break that neutrality and tell the tenant your rights have been violated?" And the answer is no. Obviously, with a right to counsel program, an attorney has that legal training. An attorney can identify when instances of the law are being broken and say, "Let's do something about that." Now, something that mediation and right to counsel do have in common is that they both have the ability to negotiate settlements out of court. So that's something they have in common. And a few weeks ago, you heard from Kansas Legal Services, Kansas Holistic Defenders, about existing resources in our county, and they talked about things like conflict of interest procedures. Because attorneys are licensed professionals with the state, they have very clear rules about trying to identify conflicts of interest early, get ahead of those, and so on. With mediators, the same is not true. In fact, a mediator for Johnson County is actually a landlord here in Douglas County. And so, you know, there's just concerns about whether that field is adequately matured for tenant landlord law. Obviously, mediators have been used for a very long time in family law, but really, the question of if it's used, if it's being used well for landlord-tenant situations, I think is an open one. And before we get to the next slide, I just included a quote from the Douglas County Tenant Experience Survey, and I would like everyone to consider if this person really would be better served by a mediation program or by an attorney. And so this is taken again directly from the Douglas County Tenant Experience Survey. Quote, "A former landlord broke open my bedroom window and climbed onto my bed while I was sick and asleep in my bed. I called the police. They did nothing. I had already had to change the locks to stop him from coming in whenever he wanted. He evicted me." I think that it would be very re-traumatizing for a survivor of an instance like this to be forced to sit in a small conference room across from the person who did this to them. And that's what a mediation program would require them to do before they have their day in court. So I think this person would be better served by an attorney. And so that's why we're asking you to vote on this by October 1st. I have physical copies that I can provide to everyone, and Lawrence Tenants is happy to work with county staff and the legal department to make sure that language is consistent with what you need it to be in order to have that vote. Passing this by October 1st would allow the county to hire a coordinator and also would allow legal providers to start issuing, start hiring, especially if they're interested in hiring law students, which may be easier, and we can talk about why, than trying to hire people who, say, work in another area of law in private practice or something. And being able to hire, you know, law school hiring is very cyclical, and being able to hire by the end of this year would allow the program to get started in earnest by the end of next year. And so delaying that further may delay the program by an entire year. And so with that, I'm ready to take questions if anyone has them. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince, and thanks, Jill, for running those slides for us. Commissioners, I might start us off with one question and just sort of start at that last slide and the proposal that Lawrence Tenants and the proposal that Lawrence Tenants has sort of put forth. So you mentioned having proposed, you say ordinance language. I just want to make a clarifying comment that counties don't have ordinances per se. We have resolution, we pass resolutions as sort of an akin to ordinances. And then we also have county code with chapters, which I know is referenced in one of your slides. So I want to unpack a little bit more to understand kind of what the process for Lawrence Tenants and other community partners that you may have worked with about pulling together proposed language that you would like us to consider. And then also just note for the record that you have brought physical copies of that proposed language. And so we can accept those, each commissioner can accept those and staff will accept a copy of that and make sure that it's scanned into this agenda item so that it's published as part of the public record. And, and then we can talk about further next steps. But if you can just give us a little bit of context about how you came to developing this proposed language and who that may have involved, that'd be great.
Yeah, thank you for that question. So in terms of like, I mean, well, we've been thinking about this as a public policy thing for a long time now. But in terms of actually writing the resolution language that we're proposing, you know, we have a number of researchers in Lawrence Tenants or people who have research skills, you know, all of us, almost all of us are volunteers. We did get a grant last year from Ahab to hire a staff member to do an education for tenants about existing, like tenant law. But so, but several of us have different research skills and we looked at ordinances that already exist in other municipalities and borrowed language directly from there. And there actually are some attorneys even in Lawrence Tenants who don't practice law, but who have law degrees who helped us write this. We also saw comments from Kansas Holistic Defenders, from Kansas Legal Services, and then from another legal aid clinic in the Kansas City area who worked on the Kansas City, Missouri Right to Counsel Program. And we got feedback from, written feedback from all three of those entities. And so it was a combination of looking at existing ordinances in other places and then working with local attorneys to sort of like fine tune that language.
So sorry, just for clarification, county staff wasn't involved with the, the document that you're bringing to us at all?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioners, other questions that are top of mind, both for, for Andrew, for Vince, and then a reminder that Hetty is with us. And Hetty, I know you didn't have any slides from KHD, but if you have any comments that you want to put on the record, please do, just if you want to editorialize it all. And otherwise, just a reminder that she's available for further questions too.
I had a couple of questions for Andrew. On your second or third slide, you mentioned free attorneys. You mean free to the person being evicted and not pro bono work, right?
Yes, definitely. Though there, you know, pro bono does come into play sometimes for, for tenant right to counsel. It would be just free for the person, you know, and staffed attorneys.
The second question I had was most of the cities that you mentioned were quite large cities. I think the only ones near Lawrence's size were Boulder and the city in Montana. Are there studies or data to indicate that other cities this size are going that way?
Yeah, we've, we've definitely worked with a lot of places that are more the size of, of Lawrence and Douglas County. Though I can't recall anyone off the top of my head that has passed it recently. One of the good things is that even though cities, not good things, one of the things is that even though cities are doing this, a lot of times their programs are very targeted. And so they'll target certain populations to make the program manageable for, for their capacity and legal services capacity and their funding capacity. So probably the best example of this is Cleveland, Ohio, which had passed right to counsel, but right to counsel is only covered for families with minor children in the household. And I think maybe senior citizens, I can't, don't quote me on that, but definitely families with minor children in the household. And so by doing that, they're able to limit it to like the capacity that they had with the idea to see how this works and then expand it later to reach a larger population as, as they see how the program works and as funding becomes available.
Thanks. I had one other question for you. I think on one slide, you said the county would hire a coordinator. Why wouldn't the city of Lawrence be the proper place for that coordination to be?
Yeah, thank you for that. So we thought about this for a number of different reasons. I mean, there's just, I mean, just to state the obvious, there's an obvious reason, which is that the county has better fiscal outlook than the city does. Let's just say that. But also, you know, our account, like, you know, in some of these larger cities, like the court is in the city, like there's a city court. Here in Douglas County, it's at the county level. So it, it sort of makes sense that the county government would be more in coordination with that. And also we wanted to consider rural residents of our county and not just Lawrenceans. And so, you know, and also, you know, the county, of course, provides the criminal legal counsel. So there's that with Kansas Holistic Defenders. And so there's that precedent as well. And so I think there's also just some existing infrastructure and relationships with legal aid clinics that make a lot of sense.
And Commissioner Dorsey, if I may, I'll share also that, I mean, that has been a conversation, topic of conversations sort of throughout the years. And because so many examples that we have are municipalities, but to your point, those larger cities, eviction court typically lies municipality to municipality. But that's not true here. It is, it's a district court wide thing. And so given that all of the involved entities, the court, the sheriff's office in, in the service and processing of the cases, our county entities, I felt pretty strongly that it, policy and programming level made sense to be countywide and to not narrow it to only the city of Lawrence, even though we know that, you know, the predominant population is here. We, we don't want to, I don't want to be exclusive of the other parts of the county.
Yeah. And I would just real quickly, that's the point about the sheriff is really interesting too, because in thinking about how do we promulgate this to people who would be recipients of this program? I mean, it's our county sheriff that serves those notices oftentimes. And so you could direct the county sheriff potentially to include information with those notices about like, by the way, you have this right and so you should show up to court potentially.
I just want to make a point of clarification that the Seventh District Court is an arm of the state, that the jurisdiction overlaps with Douglas County boundaries, but it is not a Douglas County entity, that it's, it's an arm of the state.
And I think it's also important to note that the sheriff follows the direction of that court when serving those papers and the county commission cannot direct the sheriff.
Thank you for your presentation. In your presentation, you briefly touched on basically opportunities to potentially measure homelessness and/or keeping individuals housed. Could you talk a little bit more about what that might look like moving forward if we were to pass this policy? And how you might measure that and what potential outcomes we might be able to see? And/or in your research, what outcomes you saw in other cities and/or states?
Yeah. And I might let Hetty take most of this question, but I would also note that, you know, we do, there is a municipality much closer than Boulder, which is Kansas City, Missouri. And they had like an 82% success rate, but, but I'll let Hetty take most of this.
Yeah. So currently, just as part of our own data at Kansas Holistic Defenders, we actually keep both general court data for people that we don't represent, but maybe people who are called for the Answer Docket, we've started keeping that recently. So that's just kind of to, for us to discern how many people are called to the Answer Docket, how many are not appearing, just because the records are a little bit challenging sometimes to get if we don't kind of create our own data on that. Then internally, for our clients, including the people that we provide brief service to. So if I meet someone at the Answer Docket and it's outside of our capacity to take them on for full representation, we record that interaction in our internal case filing system. We also record it on an external Excel spreadsheet, so we can easily pull that. And then we go back after, normally most outcomes are kind of found after about a month post-filing. And we, our data person has been going in and putting in the outcome of that, that person's eviction case, even if we didn't fully represent them. Of course, if we fully represent someone, we don't sign off of the case till after a dismissal or an order is issued from the judge. And then beyond that, if I have someone that receives what we would call a positive outcome in the court, so even like an eviction is not ordered against them, but they still are moving from their property. I, we go back and in, as part of our grant reporting, we report whether they became rehoused. And we keep internal notes for our office too, to know exactly where they were able to be rehoused, how quickly, and so forth.
So I think this is an important conversation and I'm glad that we're having it. I think it's the beginning of a conversation. As you probably know, we passed a budget a week ago for, for 2026. And that's how we work with anything that it gets funded through Douglas County is through that budget cycle. The, the October 1st idea that an outside group would write something and we would pass it in a short period of time and as a kind of an unfunded mandate is not something that I think fits with how Douglas County has traditionally worked. I think much more important would be to start digging in as we're doing and learn like what, what are the pieces that can be impacted? What, you know, whereas, who are the potential partners in that field? Which I think we're a long ways from that. I'm very interested in, you know, cost analysis and, you know, what are some of the projections for what this, you know, would, would cost Douglas County? You know, attorney for, for every, for every instance is a significantly different, you know, equation than, you know, you talked about some instances or Andrew talked about some jurisdictions that are more targeted. There's just a lot that I'm curious and want to know, including about, I'll have some questions about your, your surveys also, but I'll pitch it out for others.
Yeah, if I could also just like note that, I mean, and thank you for that comment. I mean, this conversation, as Commissioner Reed kind of contextualized, has been happening since 2023 in earnest. And we've had work groups with the county. So we have kind of, we have answered some of those questions, maybe not in these presentations, of course, and we can get into some of those. And I think also Commissioner Reed, you mentioned that, that there was like a part of like the self-help desk thing that there were some potentially some funding commitments that like you would clarify later. And there are some like examples of working outside of the traditional budget cycle, like on capital improvements or things like that. So.
Yeah, I, I think that we do have a larger conversation to have about what the funding mechanism is and what a process is. And, you know, Commissioner, really, I appreciate your point and understand the sort of non-traditional route, maybe that this conversation is, is coming to us for consideration of action. And I, to your point, I think that there are still some unanswered questions, but I do think, I don't think we're too far away from having some of those answers. I think a cost analysis is definitely a piece we don't have significant information about yet to really be able to grapple with what would funding look like, you know, structuring sort of a program is, there are a lot of blueprints for that, so to speak, that I think are relatively simple to, to apply. And I also, you know, we have active eviction defense work happening in the county. And to me, that, that means we're at a, a point in the conversation where it's about how to, how do we increase that capacity and, and maximize the potential there? And there are some unanswered questions about the mechanics and nuts and bolts of that. I think, you know, we do, in, in our budget process, we set aside a relatively small amount, modest amount compared to what I would assume this program like this could or might cost in earnest. But we have some money reserved in the commissioner contingency related to eviction diversion, eviction defense. And so that's a conversation that we will, can revisit this fall already. And I think that, you know, talking about potential other partners, you know, that can help with, we always talk about braided funding in this room, right? And different opportunities for how to pool together pieces. Right now, some of the work is, you know, and even though it's not right to counsel per se, eviction defense work is being funded partially by some grant funding. So, so I do have some follow-up questions for KHD about that, but I will, I'll pause just a second on it and come back to it just because I want to open up the floor for other commissioners to have questions and commentary about that. And then I'll come back for some numbers questions.
I had a legal question. I got an email over the weekend telling a story about a couple of folks from, I believe it was New York, who got well-paying jobs here in Lawrence, moved here. But because they had an eviction on their legal records, they could not find a landlord to rent to them here. So ultimately they had to quit their jobs and move back where they came from. My legal question, are evictions ever expunged from records? Or is there a time limit on them or whatever?
So this is not providing legal advice, I should say, but I will tell you that currently in our state right now, there is not active approved legislation that would expunge an eviction from a person's record. And when I say active legislation, I mean passed legislation. There are in other jurisdictions, there are in other states or maybe some kind of, some county work. I'm not certain, but definitely in other states, there's eviction ceiling or eviction expungements. And it's kind of up for debate, which is more helpful. But yeah, there is not here. It depends on how far back your landlord looks on your tenant screening report, how far back they ask that tenant screening report to look.
Commissioner Reed, this is Commissioner Kelly. I have a quick question. And I think this may be for, for John, and it's going to be a bit of a two-part question because I'm trying to understand, I appreciate Andrew's sort of walking us through criminal rights and that you have the right to counsel for criminal behaviors. If a person is not provided counsel for that, who is liable? Who can they sue because they have that right and it was denied them? No one is answering. Is my sound on? Is my mic on?
We hear you, Commissioner Kelly.
Thanks.
John is pondering and I believe will unmute in a moment to introduce himself.
So I don't practice criminal law, Commissioner, but my understanding generally is that in criminal cases, you have a constitutional right to an attorney. And if the court or the system does not provide you with that right, then you would be deprived of your right. You would have the lack of effective assistance of counsel and that would be grounds to overturn the conviction. Whether there would be a civil right of action associated with that, I'm not sure. I would have to look into that. But in any event, the, if you have not waived your right to counsel on a criminal case, my understanding is that you would, you would be able to challenge the conviction and perhaps win a reversal of the conviction in that situation. Does that answer the question you were asking? I realize there's a piece of it I don't know the answer to, and maybe some of these other folks do, but I'm, I've not looked at that particular issue.
I'll just notice that Andrew came off mute as well here.
I agree with that analysis. I think to, to better answer it, I think because in criminal cases, most often it's the state prosecuting. I think those claims would be against the state if there are any civil claims. But I also don't know the answer any better.
So then that begs my second question was if the county, so that is a federal right that people have. If the county created a right to counsel and then for some reason we were unable to fulfill that right due to funding, finding an attorney without a conflict, whatever that is, would the county be liable for denying that right?
So I'm willing to learn more about this topic from the folks here. But my research and investigation into this topic suggests that we would not have the power to create an analogous right to counsel in the civil context. Evictions and the landlord-tenant law are creatures of statute. The courts are constrained to follow those statutory requirements. As a county, we're not allowed under our home rule powers to enact legislation or resolutions that would affect the courts in that way. So my current opinion, again, subject to learning more, is that while the county would be able to create a program to provide funding and logistics and administration or a, a service that would provide counsel to tenants in eviction proceedings, we would not be able to create a legal requirement that the courts would be bound to follow, that a lawyer would be required to be appointed to a tenant or the eviction proceeding would be declared invalid or of no effect. And so it's a little bit different from the criminal context. There are, to my knowledge, some states in the country that have enacted a true right to counsel because they have jurisdiction over. because they have jurisdiction over those courts. And I'm sure our panelists would be more familiar with those specifics. I've looked at a few of those in preparation for today's meeting. But to my knowledge, I was not able to find a county or a city that enacted a right to counsel in the sense that the federal constitutional right to counsel pertains in civil, in criminal cases. And I don't believe we would have the legal authority to do that as far as I'm currently aware.
That, that's correct. Nationally, when most cities and counties have been enacting it, it has been done more as a kind of a contractual basis where it's, you know, providing a service to, to people. But most of the statutes are pretty explicit about not creating a cause of action for tenants if they're not able to receive it. So there are some states that have done it. Washington State is the one that comes to mind that is actually enforceable. But they have a very different model than most places in the country where the courts are actually appointing attorneys similar to a criminal, criminal matter. Rather than most other states and pretty much all other jurisdictions, it's still a private attorney-client relationship between the legal service provider and the, and the client, the tenant. The, the city or the county are just providing the funds to hire the attorneys to, to do that. So it's more, it's more of a grant process than it is kind of changing the law, just like the council members.
And I would add, Commissioner Kelly, if this is helpful, that the way I think about it in my research and talking with other folks in other communities is it, it's about providing, just as Andrew described, you know, the, the programming, the logistics, the service. And a key piece of that is the notification. So we, you know, being a part of being able to provide notice to every tenant served with an eviction that they have a right to access legal counsel and this is how you do it. This is, and so then it's, you know, for them to act upon. It's not, it does not involve, nor can it require the court to appoint counsel other than those few sort of rare examples of legislation. But is about notifying of the right and then being able to fulfill the right for people who wish to access. So I, that's just, that doesn't quite answer your question about liability on the other side of it. But it, you know, I, that's been a, a thread of conversation that I've had with others.
Thanks.
Any other questions, Commissioners, for presenters in particular?
So like, already on next steps.
Yes, and I have more questions. I'm just trying to leave the floor open for my peers. We're at seven till five. Yes, I do see the time. Thank you, Sarah. I, Hetty, some questions just about kind of where you all are at with your funding around civil work, which is not entire exclusively tenant representation, but primarily tenant representation. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, specifically under our active grant that is not wrapping up, that is just starting. It's next year term. It is actually written for eviction defense work. So the, the prior grant that we mentioned that we no longer have for this term, it did general civil work as well. Disposition, the access to justice grant is the name of that one. It is written by us to be an eviction defense.
Got it. Thank you. And so I don't want to muddle the waters too much with the funding that I know you didn't get renewed and is going away. But like today, right now, what's the capacity as far as number of attorneys or staff dedicated to the answer docket? And otherwise as a combination of those two funding sources that you have at the moment? And how will that change after this children's cabinet money goes away that we talked a little bit about before?
So we're winding down the children's cabinet money. That will be done by the end of September. We are winding down the two attorneys right now. So our previous second attorney is shifting over to criminal work. So we are only taking capacity of cases right now for one attorney. So at every answer docket, there is one guaranteed attorney there. Also with the children's cabinet, we lost a paralegal position, so our paralegal will not be there any longer. We also have a data person that is independently funded from not this grant or either of those grants. And they attend the answer docket with me each week. And then also generally there's a supervisor, which is typically CM that will be there. So right now, the capacity is for one attorney for new cases. What we're taking on is primarily two to three eviction cases a week.
I was just going to ask, I know it varies week to week and that you've just started recently tracking like how many people are on the docket versus how many people show up. How approximately, how many people are you talking to that you're accepting two to three for representation?
So I, I just looked at August's numbers and I will tell you, there were 54 evictions filed in Douglas County in August, 2025. So it, there is about 10, I think, on each docket, except last week was a heavy docket. Yeah, so 10, 10, nine, nine and 16 last week. So between us and self-help, it kind of depends. It depends if they want to talk to the attorneys there. Most people do, but let's say 70% of the people that, that attend the answer docket want to talk to the attorneys. Some of them get their questions resolved with self-help. It looks like about in August, less than half of the people on the answer docket appeared each time.
Thank you. So that one attorney capacity, that will continue through the, this access to justice? And that's a one-year cycle, right? Through, I think through September or October of next year?
Yeah, I think it's October, actually. I'm not certain, but yes, it will continue. And then, yeah, we would write for it again is the plan.
And at this time, do you have any other like potential funding or other things you're looking at in terms of civil work or eviction work that, that you can preview for us? If, I'm just curious if there's, I know you all are always looking for other avenues, so.
Unfortunately, I, no, I think that one of the big focuses is working on rewriting for the CB cap grant, which we would rewrite for next year, next summer. And with a hope to can like renew that funding in the future. There were some budget cuts this year, obviously funding. And so we were not renewed this year and we will continue writing for that. I do think there are constant, you know, reviewing what would be able to, instead of just supplement funding for an additional person, right? We can't just, it's hard to piece it all together. So I think the preference is for the larger funding.
Commissioner, really, I'm sorry, I cut you off before.
You know, in talking about next steps and maybe one piece of it, just one piece, but it really interests me what data you're able to collect from the folks that you're serving now. And I know that that's still kind of people who've self-selected to say that, yes, they want to work with someone. But I think the idea is to find out, you know, what are the number of illegally processed evictions? What are the number of evictions that if, if there were, you know, counsel on both sides would be not performed? As opposed to just, you know, non-payment of rent with no other counterclaims? I learned that term from you guys last time. That's still going to be an eviction that would process through regardless of counsel if it were just about not paying rent. But these counterclaims or, or other, you know, illegal actions within the eviction, I think that's kind of what we're talking about, trying to work through. Would that be correct?
Yeah, and I think one of the, so I know Vince mentioned counterclaims for habitability, which are present, I would say, in at least 50% of the cases we take on. And we're not selectively taking those ones on. It, it just happens that there are sincere habitability issues a lot in this town. However, I would say that notice, right, is the most improper thing that, that is kind of an easy dismissal, I would say. If a person is required to receive notice and they don't receive notice, often it will get dismissed before it even goes in front of the judge, before we have to even argue it. Most times we can mediate the issue with the other side attorney, but that requires them to dismiss the case versus like mediating it formally. So normally we come to kind of a resolution and we watch that dismissal be filed before we would like kind of take, be not representing that person anymore. I would say 70% of the cases have a noticed deficiency right now.
I have another, unless somebody else is waiting in line. And it's, it's about the survey. How, how many, maybe this isn't data you collected, but how many or what percentage of those survey responders were in the city of Lawrence versus other parts of Douglas County?
I believe that's in the report, but I don't have it in front of me. But yeah, the report is published.
And, and one of the reasons I'm asking is because I think probably the majority of, my guess would be the majority of respondents were probably in the city of Lawrence. And we know that the city has a licensing, a rental licensing program. Probably that struggles for funding too and for getting, getting eyes on those. But, but a lot of what was in your report were about the habitability issues of the units where the, you know, by dealing with that in an eviction case is kind of like way past the time when it should have been dealt with. So I'm just curious why this is the first stop for that, for that data versus the city of Lawrence.
Yeah, that's an excellent question. Thank you for that. And I didn't really have the chance to get into this in the presentation, but right to counsel also serves as like a regulatory mechanism. Because like in state statute, the way to deal with those is through suing, suing your landlord proactively in some way or in a counterclaim in an eviction. And so yes, it is true that like the city of Lawrence has this like licensing system that they could take care of. But, you know, the city does not, you know, but what can actually be regulated there is also limited by law. If you think about it too, the city also has things like inspectors, but those inspectors cannot look at leases. Like are there junk fees and leases? I will say like I'm a renter, I've personally had, but I'm fairly certain is an illegal like insurance system in the past. Like I was asked to pay a liability fee to the landlord, which was a company that was out of state when I lived in Johnson County. Instead of like, just like having renters insurance, which would of course both cover like the landlord for liability of if I did something wrong, but also cover some of my property through that system. That's kind of an aside. But, you know, but, you know, the state or the city can't necessarily look at leases, can't necessarily look at is insurance or their junk fees? Is the insurance system like, is that part of the lease wrong? They can look at things like mold, structure, et cetera. And so there's limits to what they can do. And the primary mechanism in state law for addressing these things is through litigation. And so, and, and one analogy or one sort of image I want people to consider is like imagine an apartment complex with 100 renters and one of those renters gets evicted, but you know, 70% of the renters are having, you know, an illegal fee. Well, if that one renter wins in court in that eviction counterclaim process, then the landlord has an incentive to correct it for the remaining 69 renters because like there's, you know, like I want the option to evict those people in the future. Or I'm worried about like lawsuits from these folks who hear from their neighbor that they won. And so right to counsel also serves as a mechanism of addressing problems for people who aren't facing evictions too. And again, that's just because the only way to enforce these is through private litigation.
And you're talking about those pieces that would fall under the radar for an eviction licensing program. Awesome.
And in situations where it's not habitable, does the health department get involved prior to it actually getting on the docket or?
So there is very little that can extend the timeline for an eviction. And I think that's the problem with the, the idea that inspectors or the health department can do anything to stop an eviction. It is nearly impossible for a tenant to request a continuance in an eviction hearing for issues of habitability. Possession is decided within 14 days. Unless the landlord's attorney requests a continuance, I can't get additional time for the health, the code inspectors or the health department to come get involved, unfortunately. And the other thing I do want to add on about inspections, right, is inspections, when someone calls code inspection, for, for instance, they do repair, prepare a great report. I, I often build my counterclaims off of that. Unfortunately, their enforcement, their, their teeth to, to doing inspections is not as strong as what a tenant could do with an attorney. A lot of that, those fees that, that might come from a landlord repairing your apartment after a bad code inspection, they're passed on to renters. I have had them in eviction trials where they say, you've got to pay this fee. And, and oftentimes it is improper for them to do that. But oftentimes we're negotiating with that to try to get a person to stay in their home. A person can't often do that on their own without an attorney.
And I guess I'd, I'd add too, so from a cities and an incorporated area controlled building codes. So it isn't, there are health and safety issues through the health department, but most code inspection comes through the city and would come through municipal court. Cities in Kansas have the ability to ticket for and find people in violation through municipal court for their codes. The county does not. So that's also another intricate little difference between us is that the city can do some of that work and we can't.
I would also add too, that when you consider the tenant perspective, like if you report something to your city, the landlord knows that you reported. And so a lot of people don't report for fear of retaliation. Right to counsel solves that problem because the person's already being retaliated against. Like by the time the eviction is filed, you have nothing left to lose by raising a counterclaim, right? That's kind of your last thing. But many renters will not go to the city because they're, you know, the landlord knows that you reported to the city and all of a sudden that relationship is sour. So that's just another thing to consider too, as a practicality.
And if you don't mind, just one more question. You mentioned earlier that, so if we take the example of August, I think you said in, in August, there were 16 cases in a week. And you're only able, your team's only able to take two to three cases. So in that scenario, we have 13 cases that have not been taken. What happens to those 13 cases?
So that was last week and I'm not certain how many of those did not appear, but probably about 70% of those people did not appear at the answer docket. There's a default judgment issued under their name and then there's a writ issued. So the people that we weren't able to take on, we kind of triaged. Are they people that are, have made a payment that are, just need to kind of shore things up with their landlord and make sure that their landlord gets this eviction matter dismissed? Often if we do a brief service, I do what I call extended brief service. So I'll check the court record. I'll make sure that that gets dismissed and I'll contact them back and say, while we can't take on your case fully, I see that it's dismissed in the court record. So you're good to go with your landlord. The people that we do help are generally, we prioritize the ones that we know have actionable claims, such as counterclaims within our capacity. There were certainly some last week that we were not able to take on that have actionable claims.
And with those actionable claims, do they, is there anyone that helps them or they fall through the cracks?
The answer docket refers them out, I think, to Kansas legal services and it depends on their capacity. But often, yes, they do fall through the cracks, unfortunately. And, and if someone, you know, we do our best to educate someone and say like the eviction laws are very specific, right? The statute is very specific. It tells you the exact rules of how a judge is going to find because it is so specific. So we say, we'll say, here are your options. If you're behind rent and there's not counterclaims, maybe you can try to work out an agreement with your landlord for a payment plan. Or you can try to vacate the property before the eviction hearing or see if they give you additional time. And some of them will successfully do that, but it is a rarity that someone's able to do that without a strong extended brief service, I would say.
So I just wanted to understand if anyone's listening, what you're saying, that those individuals that possibly fall through the cracks, they could be adding to our homeless rate?
Not only could be, they are.
They are. Okay. So I just want people to hear that. And those landlords that are out there, I want people to understand that they could be adding to our homeless rate. Or they are adding to our homeless rate.
They are.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson, for that point. Yeah, I strongly believe that right to counsel is a very effective tool for homelessness prevention. And also, you know, to reiterate a point that was made by Andrew earlier, it's not a silver bullet, right? And we've got, had lots of discussion today about it. There's tons of information about how evictions go, some of which we talked about a couple of weeks ago during our work session, that make it evident that, and given the aggressiveness of Kansas statutes and heavy, heavily weighted towards landlords in, in those statutes, that evictions can and will still continue to happen. They are not entirely preventable. They are legally valid in, in some instances. But I'm interested in how do we help curb the illegal and invalid evictions? And also encourage other resolution-seeking and collaborative thinking about how to, how to prevent eviction. And so I do think that right to counsel is a really strong tool and an important one because so many things can only be handled in litigation and in a courtroom when it comes to tenant landlord laws and a lot of these issues that we're talking about. And it will not, it will not work in isolation, you know, or the absence of other tools, right? The rental assistance programs, strong social services. The rental assistance programs, strong social services, other prevention programming. And, you know, I think that it could really bolster the interest in and use of mediation too, if landlords have, are incentivized to realize that there's other ways to resolve an issue before getting to court and having counterclaims filed against them, or prolonging their ability to take possession back of their property, if that's what their ultimate goal is. I just think there's a multitude of reasons to really pursue this ideas with a policy and programming solution for the work that we're doing in the county. And obviously, there's more conversation to be had. I really appreciate a robust conversation today and questions from fellow commissioners. I think as a next step, I would like, and I forgot before in the beginning to introduce John Bullock, and so I apologize about that. John Bullock is Douglas County Council, for anybody who's watching or listening later. And I have asked him through staff to do some research sort of in preparation for this meeting and have an understanding. And at this point, given that we've got a proposal given to us for our consideration, you know, I'd like to take the proposed policy language that Lawrence tenants and their partners have worked with. As mentioned before, have staff upload that to our packet, of course, so it's part of the public record, and have legal counsel review that and evaluate it with staff and determine what some next steps are, and some recommendations from staff about how to move forward, and that we can bring this conversation back to an agenda sometime in October. We don't have a meeting on October 1st, I want to also say that. Our first, October 1st is a Wednesday?
Yeah.
Why did I look at that wrong? Well, that's...
That's our C day.
Me looking at the calendar wrong, and I apologize. Sorry for that.
We don't meet on the 29th.
Okay. Apologies for that. I should have double-checked myself. But I would like to have, obviously, legal counsel evaluate that, be able to talk with staff, and get back with our guests, speakers from Lawrence tenants about sort of next steps and bringing back further discussion, probably with some more information from county council to sort of help commissioners further unpack what our options are. Does that sound agreeable?
Very much. And I wonder, is it okay to ask for more information about the survey, if you have more to share or more information about what you're seeing, off of line, just through emails, and we can put that into the packet also? I just have more curiosity about that.
And I can make sure, I've definitely got a copy of the Tenant Experience Survey. It was shared with us like in a memo last year, shortly after it came out, but we get a lot of things uploaded to our memos. So I have the document downloaded, and I can make sure staff have it at the top of their inbox to share out with commissioners.
I guess in addition to sort of those conversations about a code-specific language, I have concerns about changing code without identifying a funding source. So I do think we would need to have conversations about that before we would adopt a new code resolution, because as we've said, you know, we have, we've adopted our budget for next year, so I'd want us to have further conversations about that. And then I also think staff would have some opinions as to how to approach providing that service and to how it would be administered and authorized, and I'd like to have some input on that.
Yeah. Thank you for that, Sarah. I definitely, I want to be able to evaluate and review the policy opportunity, but also, and for me, most importantly, talk about the programming possibility and the sort of mechanics and specifics of that, because I'm much more interested in policy in practice than policy on paper. That's my preference. I, both go hand in hand altogether, but I'm really interested in trying to figure out how it is we can leverage that there's some eviction defense work happening right now. We've heard from Kansas Legal Services that their capacity could be, you know, increased, and they have an interest in that beyond the referrals that they're currently taking from self-help centers. So I think that there are some opportunities to be had. I'm interested in revisiting the conversation with Douglas County Legal Aid again, because I think a student legal aid clinic is like a prime place for this type of representation because of what a fast timeline it is and what a robust learning opportunity is. So, yeah, I think those are dual conversations to have for today's purposes. We'll sort of take next steps on evaluating what you brought to share with us today, Vince, and be back in touch with you about sort of next steps for reconvening this conversation at a county commission meeting. Commissioner Kelly, any final questions or thoughts for you? Commissioners here in the room, anything else for now? Okay, thank you again. We really appreciate your time. We are in recess until our 5:30 business meeting.